Good evening.
Good day.
What's going on?
It's gonna be a very brief meeting. All right, we haven't come up with a good name yet, but I don't know if you saw in my memo to the staff, I'm kind of challenging them with arriving some titles that appropriately reflect the accountabilities. We'll see what they come up with.
Hi there. All right. My microphone working? Yeah, thanks.
Hi, everybody.
Hi there. How are you?
I'm good. It's good to see everyone.
Good. I know. I'm sorry we aren't in person, but sometimes circumstances are what they are. So and I'm glad it'll get you out in time for for your celebration night with your daughter.
I'm sorry about that. I appreciate the flexibility.
Oh, no, we're happy to do that. That's always always good news. All right, I think we're just waiting for Michelle. And then we ready to rock and roll. Such that it is.
Our girls four by two hundred qualified for the finals in Saturday.
So excited.
Yeah, so we had two teams. Well, actually, the four by eight qualify for regionals because there was no semifinals, but the four before by two hundred qualified by like point zero or eight hundredths of a second.
Oh, my gosh, how exciting.
Wow, it was so close. So they get to race on Saturday, which is good.
Where is it, John?
Well, today the semis are here in Hilliard.
Yes.
The I the the finals are Saturday here and then the re the regionals are at Pickering to North.
Okay.
I think next Wednesday is the next Wednesday is the preliminary. So it's exciting. Our four by eighteen beat their beat their personal time. They beat their best time by nine seconds. So it was exciting.
That's impressive.
Especially like that's why I texted you guys a copy of the or the the results of the schools that we're running against.
Yeah.
Pretty impressive.
Yeah.
Jason, you'll learn that anytime we have an athletic success, it's really, really something to celebrate. It'd be awesome to have more of those.
Shaving nine seconds off of your time at the biggest race of the year. That's a big deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm excited.
It's great. Um, so that's why I'm sitting in Hilliard Davidson or Hill your Darby parking lot.
Well, we're glad to have you join us.
That's like the story of my life every day. So
some sporting event parking lot.
Somewhere or bleachers.
Um, all right, good. Well, I think we're all on now and it is six thirty. So in accordance with high revised code one two, one point two, two, House Bill one ninety seven and four oh four, I hereby call to order the Board of Education of the Bexley City School District Special Board Meeting for Tuesday, May eighteenth. Mr. Smith, could you call the roll?
Mr. Bardo.
Here.
Ms. Minio.
Here.
Ms. Mitchell.
Here.
Ms. Powers.
Here.
Ms. Snowden.
Here. Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Thank you. That motion carries. All right. So first up on our agenda tonight, I am very pleased to offer our superintendent and consultant contract for Dr. Fine. We have, as you all know, have been through a very extensive process, had a lot of community feedback, questions and answers and videoing and zooming. And it was a lot of work and I'm really thrilled with the result. I think we've found just the perfect person for this time in our in our school district's history, and I couldn't be more pleased. I think the things that I think of that will be the greatest successes for Dr. Fine moving forward is that he's a great communicator and listener. He has backgrounds managing crises, which is especially thinking of this last year, that's a that's super beneficial. He can build a strong team. He's collaborative. Our community really responded positively to him. He will have an account, a culture of accountability, and I think really bring our district to the next level. So I'm very thrilled to have him here. And given that, can I have a motion to approve his contract both for the full term of July first of twenty twenty one through July thirty first of twenty twenty four? And then also for a consultant contract, which will run from May twenty fourth. So we had through July first. So we have some time with Dr. Good to get to know the the district a little bit better and have some time with our staff and personnel and us board members as well. So that was a long one. Can I have a motion to approve the contract and the consulting contract, please?
Certainly. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Snowden, can I ask one quick question?
Um, yeah, let's do a motion in a second. Okay, sorry. Can I have a motion, please?
So or I'll give you a second.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Ms. Minio.
Okay, so I'm really sorry that I did not get to ask this ahead of time. The July one start date typically would be an August one start, right? We're just starting. The country contracts usually run August to August one to July thirty first, or they? I mean, that just felt to me, I I just checking on the logistics of it.
I think it's not. I don't know that there's any specifics around it. We do have with our evaluation, there's generally an August date in it, which we extended to August fifteenth so that we had the opportunity to review and set our goals by August fifteenth so that that was after our August meeting. So, yeah, so I think it's pretty typical. In fact, I think our previous contract or contract with our previous superintendent was on this same date schedule in July.
Hey, thanks.
Uh huh. Any other questions?
I do have one, and I'm sorry, my house phone is ringing in the background.
I can't. I'm good.
Um, so my quick question is, so do we need to do something with Dr. Goods contract also? Or does that automatically null and void?
Uh, Dr. Goods contract is until we hire a new superintendent. So that was very wisely written into the into the last contract. So we're in good shape on that front. And I say wisely because I didn't do it. Dr. Good recommended that one. It's super smart and Dr. Good me. So
Okay, thank.
Mm hmm. Any other questions?
So Marley, just for clarification, Dr. Goods' contract will run until the end of June.
Yeah. Right. And then pick up on and then Dr. Fines will pick up on July first.
Thank you.
You're up. All right, we have a motion and a second. And this is a personnel matter. So if you can call the roll vote, please, Mr. Smith.
Ms. Powers.
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Bardo.
Gonna unmute.
I don't see him anymore.
There he is.
Oh, he says I keep cutting out.
Mr. Bardo. How come? Miss, Miss Minio?
Yes.
Ms. Snowden?
Yes.
And Mr. Bardo, are you there?
Unmute, John.
John?
John, can you unmute?
Attention bells. Hey, John. Hill your, oh, he's on the Hill your.
He looks frozen again.
Um, all right. John, can you reload? We're gonna wait a minute and see if we can get Mr. Bardo back with us. Because I'd like to have, I know we have a union. I believe that we will have unanimity and I'd like the record to reflect that. So oh yeah. Dr. Fine, we just did this to build in a little excitement.
They feel like this is part of the initiation.
My little yeah.
Did you guys hear me now?
Yes, we have a motion and a second. Prove the contract and the consultant contract and the superintendent contract. And Mr. Smith is calling the roll.
I'm so sorry. I was I haven't moved at all and it just keeps cutting out, but my vote is yes.
Thank you. Excellent. We got you in.
Probably stay as just no video and see if it doesn't eat up your bandwidth.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm doing. I'm just gonna sit here like that. So, yes.
Perfect. All right. Thank you. So that a motion carries. Thank you all very much. And Dr. Fine, welcome to Bexley.
Yay.
You. I could not be happier. I am so thankful and want to thank you all, the members of the Bexley Board of Education, and I have thoroughly enjoyed the process of meeting the community, the students, the staff members. And I'm really excited to get started. And a huge thank you to Dr. Good. He's been such a great support already. So thank you, everyone.
Yeah, it's our pleasure. Thank you. All right, good. So then we're gonna move on for just one other item tonight, and that is a job description that Dr. Good has been working on with ours with our administrative staff. So, Dr. Good, can you tell us about that?
I certainly can. Thank you. And congratulations, Dr. Fine, for your appointment. And yeah, it's been a pleasure actually working with Jason already. So I'm I'm really pleased that we'll be able to double the pleasure, double the fun and performance of the district hopefully in this month. So thank you, board, for the opportunity to bring district focus back to the themes presented in the Bexley Blueprint eighteen to two thousand twenty one. Focused on the pandemic and thriving. But it's it's a pleasure to be able to return now to where our priorities should be. The creation of a human resource officer really supports development of a high performing team, which is one of those themes. And while the description in the draft position description indicates comprehensive accountabilities, some of the specific functions are new or enhanced. And as an illustration of those, I'm going to call out some of those priorities that really illustrate the need for this position. One of those is that we need to begin to develop and monitor a process for anticipating enrollment changes. So someone that's monitoring the building and the zoning code changes, where building permits are being let, the patterns of family migrations into and within the district, birth rates, et cetera. So we have an accurate representation of what our student enrollment will be in the future and therefore staffing needs. This position will be working with the leader of diversity, equity and inclusion or belonging or understanding that the title continues to evolve and that those individuals will be creating a recruitment and onboarding and retention protocols and practices so that we can increase the diversity of the district's workforce and be responsive to the climate and the cultural needs that have been indicated by our stakeholders. This individual will also collaboratively administrate grants that are associated with personnel recruitment, contracting, professional development, evaluation and other human resource matters. You may recall that we are one of only two districts in central Ohio that received the diverse of diversifying education grant from the Ohio Department of Education. And so this individual would be helping to administer that grant. As well, this person will assist our principals and the district administrators in evaluating the effectiveness of personnel and will be developing aligned growth oriented support systems to ensure we have high levels of performance and so that we are appropriately recommending personnel for continuing contracts. Associated with that is an entirely new Ohio teacher evaluation system two point O. And so this position would be providing professional development and support to district leaders and staff with the rollout of OTAS two point O. And finally, one of the new responsibilities is that this administrator will also work with human resource and the staff wellness, climate programs and policies to support the goals, the district's goals to positively engage employees at all level. So we know that staff wellness is a focus as well as student wellness. Now, in the past, Dr. Williams had led much of this work and we're really grateful for his leadership and the stability he offered to anticipate to to address the anticipated growth needs. Dr. Williams is going to continue to service point on the athletics and extracurriculars, business management, custodial services, food services, maintenance and safety and security, but also focus on facilities, master planning, which has come up repeatedly in the community and from our board and other individuals in central office have supported that human resource work as well. So this this new role will bring it all together for a very comprehensive, very systemic approach. So I won't read through the essential functions or the qualifications. What I will tell you is this work is a joint, there's a collaborative effort between Dr. Fine and myself. He created a wonderful first draft and we added just a few other pieces to it. And I'm really pleased to bring it forward for the board's consideration and first reading. And I don't know why I'm so tongue tied tonight. I think I've been doing a lot of talking today. So I apologize.
You're fine. I you did great with it. I really appreciate it. Are there any? So I'll just note that this is a first reading. It is adding personnel to a position to our district. So we like to take the time to hear about it, consider it, but because of the timing, we do want to make sure and have the opportunity to hire somebody good for this. And this is the time, as you all know, when people in the education world are moving around. So we will have, as you can see under four A, we're gonna have another special board meeting next week to vote on this position and that will give Dr. Good the opportunity to post it so that everybody can who's interested can apply. So again, it's just a first reading. We don't need any action tonight, but if you have questions, you can ask them now or contact Dr. Good and within the next week. So we're all ready to vote on it next week.
Dr. Good, I do have questions. Hold on one second, please. Sorry, I've got little people here, too. Dr. Good, so this position kind of has like a compliance officer slash recruitment slash support role and employee relations. So my only my two questions are, it feels a little big, like we threw a lot into the role and my experience with that, at least with Bexley, is we did the same thing with the Director of Community. Look, we I can't even remember. It feels like forever ago. The Director of Student and Community Engagement, like we had everything in there but the kitchen sink. And it just, it was a lot, a lot of priorities, really difficult to meet all of those expectations. And then you start to see, you know, a little a lot of difficulty. And then the other question that I have, because you have that compliance officer slash recruitment piece, that's a very different type of mentality than, but are you looking for an educator? Because if we're trying to meet the educator deadline, that's a different type of personnel, like a recruiter, a compliance officer, two totally different people. So I guess I'm my question is, what are you looking for in this role? And there's a whole lot packed into this one.
There is. Thank you for the question. I think it's a good question. I'll certainly invite Dr. Fine to comment as well. I will tell you that right now, all of those responsibilities do exist currently but are spread throughout Bexley City Schools administrative team. And there isn't the alignment that is necessary for us to be very strategic. So when if we think and we go back to the ones that I called out, if we think and start with what does our enrollment look like in the future? What's the demography of that enrollment? What are the increases in that enrollment? Then that suggests how we might staff our buildings and we have enough data to know. Then that suggests how we might staff our buildings, and we have enough data to know what percentage of that staff may need to provide specialized services for our students and what kind of training and supports that staff will need. So involving professional development evaluation in this, as well as the recruitment and the onboarding, are actually a very natural sort of sequence for this position or this office they have. You are correct about the the compliance piece, that the Title IX compliance piece generally does reside in your human resource office. In larger districts, they'll actually have a separate team that may be doing that work. But we have actually done that work out of Harley Shop in the past as well. And he was also overseeing the HR responsibilities. Probably one of the the biggest challenges will be the implementation of OTES two point oh and also the crafting of some of those strategic plans for recruiting a more diverse workforce and inviting them into our district and supporting their tenure here. So we do have individuals that are interested. We shared the draft position description with other human resource directors to get their input, and so it's gone through a couple of iterations already. So your questions are all very valid, and thankfully, we're on the same page and did a little bit of due diligence to be certain we weren't proposing something that wasn't realistic for Bexley City Schools. But I hear you. Not sure I would apply for it because I don't have that kind of background.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, all right. So any other questions? And again, if you do, you know, we have the week to look at them. So we, you know, we can, we can go forward with that. All right. So we do not have executive session this evening. So we don't have anything under three A. And then the only other matters that may properly come before the board were, as I mentioned, I just, we will have a a meeting at seven PM on May twenty fourth to look at the to approve the job description for Leader of Employer Relations. And I guess my last comment under this section was just a heads up to all of us as we're in parking lots and homes, et cetera. House Bill one ninety seven and four oh four expire on July first. So for those of you who are on the board previous to the pandemic, which I guess we all were, you will remember back in the days, we always had to be in the building and your vote won't count unless you are in the building and in and in the board meeting as present. So just as we look to the future, I do still need to get some dates, and we'll get some dates from Dr. Fine for you all for border treat sometime in August. I think that'll give Dr. Fine an opportunity to get his feet wet, meet with people, see what's going on, get some plans and ideas in place, and then we can all meet in August, I think, would be a good idea. We'll also look forward to getting into some data around mental health, social, emotional wellness over the summer, and we'll have a report on that most likely at our August meeting. So we'll look for those things. So if you got, if board members could send me, it seems to me, and Dr. Fine, too, that Sundays are generally have been a good time for us to do board retreats. So if you could let me know your availabilities in August, that would be helpful. And again, just remember that coming July, come July first, we're gonna need to be in the building for our board meetings live. So I think.
Hey, Marley. Do you have a question along those lines, since the CDC has changed their guidelines? Or whatever they call them, change the guidelines, you know, of so- social distancing not required if you have a vaccine and masking not required. And we open our board meetings back up to spectators, like live spectators, people. How does that impact the school? I'm less concerned about myself because we're we're separated enough from a crowd. But in the community room in particular, where it's the smallest amount of space, that just, I don't know, it makes me a little concerned that you very possibly could have people in our audience that are not vaccinated.
Yeah, right. And of course, we're all vaccinated. But I think that is something we'll look at over the next, and you know, before July first, I'm sure we're gonna have a lot more changes. So we may like having it in the theater where there's more room or things like that. But we'll, we'll stay open to it. If you guys have any good ideas, please let me know. But I think our, I mean, we'll, we'll try and do June, which is June eighth, in the building as well. So we'll see how that one works. That one, we might still zoom as we've been doing in the past. But I'll, we'll have to report back in on that one because I need to talk to Kyle and Dr. Good about how we want to operate that one to Mr. Joe. So. Okay, just.
Thank you.
Think about, sure.
I can I add something to that? I, um, as you know, I've got a problem with the timing of our July meeting for that reason. And I know you were looking at moving the August meeting, and so I just wanted to.
Now that we're moving the summer meeting off of Ratchashana, we'll look at that. Yeah.
Right. So I may just suggest that, if possible, that we look at the July meeting, too. I've got a thought about it, so I'll just send something out to you to to think about that possibly.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, great. All right. So then can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Great. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Thank you. That motion carries. All right. Welcome, Dr. Fine. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Fine.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
You, too.
See you, everybody. Bye.
Yeah.